This time I'll call the March 10th, 2022 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our meeting today, we only have one item to add to the agenda, actually to have a special presentation by our Sheriff's Department during public comment. And then also, we have bids on a structural steel for Daisy Road Bridge. And with that agenda as amended, I move that we approve it. I'll second it. We have the motion and second for approval of the amended agenda. Is there any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the March 3rd meeting, also accounts payable of $964,340.96, SD security, $3,384, hand checks of $602.11, and abatements of $1,320.48.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. We have the motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The next item we have is commission comments, Ron.
Just real quickly, we have the Sheriff's Department here. Want to thank folks for coming in and the hard work you guys do. Want to thank all the employees for Dixon County, for what they do for us here in Dixon County, especially the road through out there today, folks out here protecting us from safety and so on. So again, appreciate your hard work.
Okay, thank you. Great.
Yeah, I mentioned work session, I attended the tax sale, thought it went very well. Jerry's excellent auctioneer, got it. No one wants to be sure if he can do an auctioneer job, just need a lot of people to work with him to get that chant down though.
Yeah. You know, all the deputies are back there laughing right now.
That's all in. Oh, and I did have three males that we got.
Okay, yes. And I added those to our pile here. Okay. There's an EDC meeting tonight. Brad, do you have any update on that as far as the selection process?
I know that we interviewed three people. We made, or they made a conditional offer to one. That was last Friday, and I haven't heard anything since. So I don't know whether they're negotiating or what, but there was one candidate that was, an offer was made to. If he accepts, he said it'd be about six weeks before he could relocate and start.
And Central Kansas Mental Health, I serve on that board on behalf of the commission. And we have a reception on Monday. And Kathy Mosher has retired and is going to move to Topeka. And so we're just having a, have an appreciation reception for her. And earlier this morning, we had our department head meeting where we heard just kind of updates from each department. And also just wanted to express thanks to, to our employees and department heads, elected officials. We're kind of getting, winding down to where we're transitioning back into the new facility. And I know it's been very challenging and a lot of perseverance, a lot of hard work, extra work. But also wanted to thank, you know, the, the public. You know, I'm sure at times it seemed a little bit disruptive to them, not knowing exactly, you know, where you needed to go and who you needed to see. They've been very patient and those out at Sterling Hall. So anyway, certainly appreciate all the extra efforts. And that's all I have. We do not have any proclamations today. We will have public comments, but before we have public comments, we have many people here from the Sheriff's Department. And I want to turn the floor over to Sheriff Davis for a special recognition that you have planned.
Okay. We had a promotion process at the Sheriff's Office, both on road patrol and in corrections. And we are promoting some individuals. How about that corner right there? Seems like it's more.
Right after I turn around.
This is Vaughn Stiver. He's going to be promoted from a criminal investigations to sergeant. This is certificate of promotion. Reposing in him special trust and competence, I hereby appoint and constitute Vaughn Stiver into the rank of sergeant, to have him exercise the powers and functions of the rank of sergeant for the Dixon County Sheriff's Office as prescribed by law. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand at my office in the city of Abilene, state of Kansas, this 13th day of March, 2022. And I've got his son. Take care over Monday. Sir, congratulations. Now they're just going to take time to dress.
And you want to introduce those that have participated in this pen in here?
Yeah, this is my wife, Michaela Stivers.
Well, thank you so much because, you know, things like this, I mean, they, they are, they're kind of a family effort. And so appreciate both of you being able to be here.
Throughout everything, going to criminal investigations and now this. Been very blessed to have her.
Proud moment?
And they all came out in the snow to be here.
Hey, thank you. Nice to have you here too.
Yeah.
Okay. This is Deputy Roy Gibble. Certificate of promotion. Reposing in him special trust and competence, I hereby appoint and constitute Roy Gibble to the rank of sergeant, to have him exercise the powers and functions of the rank of sergeant for the Dixon County Sheriff's Office as prescribed by law. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand at my office in the city of Abilene, state of Kansas, this 13th day of March, 2022. Good thing having to dress you every morning, she'd be used to it.
She's just upset because she can't give me blood wings this time.
Look at her arms, that.
That for a while, I actually did have to dress him because his straps were still. Thank you, Charlie.
Don't stick it in the collarbone, this kind of. Ooh, I stuck myself.
I love how you put it back in.
Yep.
You've got plenty of experience.
She was upset when I went to about her. She couldn't stick no more.
How long have you been with the Sheriff's Department?
I've been sheriff since 2013.
Okay.
For five and a half years, went to Rose in 2018.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Want to stand here. Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Well, that's cheating for something helpful. This is what I'm told.
First person's always had a disadvantage, the others get to kind of improvise a little, so.
This is Zachary Mitchell. He came up, he came to us from the Junction City Police Department, so. Certificate of promotion. Reposing in him special trust and competence, I hereby appoint and constitute Zachary Mitchell to the rank of sergeant, to have him exercise the powers and functions of the rank of sergeant for the Dixon County Sheriff's Office as prescribed by law. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand at my office in the city of Abilene, state of Kansas, this 13th day of March, 2022. Congratulations, Zach. Okay. Let's introduce you.
Yes, this is my lovely wife, Lauren. She's supported me through my career and making the move over from Junction City PD over here. So we've been residents for a long time and she's from here. So it's great to be in my own community, it's her own community. So I just want to appreciate everyone for coming and thank you guys.
My attention that Roy didn't get to introduce his wife.
No. Oh, this is Alicia. We've been together for, darn. We've been together for 29 years and she's followed me through a 24 year career in the Army and now she follows me through this, so.
That's worth applause.
I have a tray.
Well, thank you all for being here today.
We got one more. Those are the patrol side, we got Connie.
Okay, just get this rolling, yeah.
Okay. This is Connie Jadeber, Drake Supervisor, Stephen Kinsey. Certificate of promotion. Reposing in him special trust and competence, I hereby appoint and constitute Connie Jadeber, reposing in her special trust and competence, I hereby appoint and constitute Connie Jadeber to the rank of corrections lieutenant, to have him exercise the powers and functions of the rank of corrections lieutenant for the Dixon County Sheriff's Office as prescribed by law. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand this, in the city of Abilene, state of Kansas, this 13th day of March, 2022. I've got ahead of myself.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Since '04. Yep.
She's starting to get it figured out. Thank you guys for coming, I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
We really do, you guys.
Need a shot.
Extra time.
Where do you want them at?
Oh, over there.
Where do you want it?
I'll let you at first.
And while you're lining up, I just want to say we really do appreciate all the work that you do. Public safety and law enforcement, it's, it's so important to our county, to our citizens. And really appreciate what you do. And, and you know, we really do, we want to strive to have the best department we can have. And I think time and time again, we have people from other counties look to Dickinson County and say, what a great job you do. But, but it's the people and the teamwork that we have here, so thank you.
Get in there, Davis.
I was getting just the group shot.
I kept talking as long as I could to give you time.
Yeah. Okay, now one more minute.
You skip up here, Brian.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Happens every time to us. It's one, one thing or another.
Oh, thank you a lot.
Do you see the house?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thing you do. Earlier today, when we had our department head meeting, we heard from HR and some of the job openings that we have, we heard about some of the challenges. We have a lot of positions that have been filled. I'm kind of putting Brad on the spot a little bit here. But one of the things that's important is that we give competitive wages. We talk about, we want to have the best department, we want to have the best employees. And, and yet, you know, a piece of that has to do with that we also need to be very competitive. And that's something we work for because I know, you know, that, that's just part of it. But Brad, you want to mention some of the efforts that we've made, those lines that maybe be helpful in situations like this?
Well, we try to provide the best benefits that we can. And I think we have extremely good benefits from, from health insurance to paid time off and vacation and everything. And as you well know, we, we have been increasing the salary schedule almost every year, trying to keep it up. The problem with increasing that, obviously, in the competitive world is everybody else increases there. And so it's a, it's a continuous struggle. And what we've seen in the last year, or maybe two since COVID, is we're not only competing now with the other public sectors, we're competing with, with the private sector, with non-skilled jobs. And so even, even your McDonald's and your food service and things like that are seeing the, the feeling the pinch on, on being able to attract staff. So, you know, we've all heard about the increase of, of minimum wage that's looming and, and people are paying more and more just to get people to, to apply for and work jobs. And we're no exception, so. You know, it comes down to, you know, I guess it depends on who you talk to, whether, whether wages are most important to people. I think it, the order you get wages are less important and benefits are more important, maybe. Knowing from my own kids, getting into the workforce, that they're a little bit more focused on wages than they are the benefits because they don't use a lot of them yet. And so we try to, try to have the best of both worlds and, and make it, as much as anything, Andrea touched on it, make it a pleasant place to work, whatever department it is. And I think that's probably as valuable as anything. We have seen a tremendous amount of, of change over the last year or two in comparison to what we did prior. I think part of that's COVID, part of it's, you know, we've, we've known about the baby boomer issue coming and we've certainly lived it and seen it and, and too need to live it. So a lot of the people that were accustomed to here retiring, that they're, you know, they're at that age. And so replacing those jobs and trying to retain them. Attracting people, getting them to come to work and then retaining them is a real challenge. So.
And the staff development part, once you invest time and money, plus they have the experience at their job, that's really a tremendous asset for the county. And for that investment to follow through, not only do you need to attract new employees when there's openings, but have the employee retention. And I know Ron has mentioned this before, and actually I have to, this goes back a few years. You know, Craig, actually, I remember you bringing that up, that let's make sure our wages are competitive and the steps are in place. And, you know, I kind of, I, I don't know if that was on my radar as much as it was yours, but, but I'm, I really appreciate that you brought that up. And it's, it's important.
I can say something, I, the people who are in here, I'm glad to see that rectum officers now have a place that they can move up and, you know, and make it more, and make it perfection. And I have with Jerry for, you know, sergeants and stuff like that, that, you know, that you can step up, not being a.
Not just a job, it's a profession.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have then.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? This is public comments. If there is anyone that's online that would want to comment on anything that is not on the agenda, this would be opportunity to do that. And you'd need to, as usual, give your name and address. So we do not have any public comments at this time? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
This is Rhonda Bopray, 201 Northeast 8th Street. I'd like to comment on what county attorney's report said this morning during your work session about spending more money to hire a new person for the department. Her description of the duties and responsibilities does sound like more help is needed. However, it also detailed many inefficient procedures in their department. And I would encourage them to streamline their processes and maybe come up with new solutions to save time and energy and, you know, avoid duplication of efforts and so on, in order to save that money and avoid spending more money for a new person. The county population is decreasing, but spending is still going up. Modernization should make things more efficient and cheaper, not more expensive and time consuming. So as a taxpayer, I would prefer costs to decrease and not increase. And perhaps some changes in procedures would save time and reduce the workload so additional spending is not needed. So that's, that's my take on the issue. I hope that they will take that to heart and even if they have to, you know, consult an efficiency expert or somebody to give them advice on how to streamline some procedures or, you know, eliminate extra steps or something to make the workload a little easier, I think that'd be a better solution. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate what you guys all do every month or every week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rhonda. I don't believe we have any other comments, public comments. We do have some notices and communications we'll get to in a little bit. So next thing we have is reported county officers, our county administrator, Brad.
We did do fuel bids for diesel fuel last week. And Sapp Brothers again got the bid at 322 a gallon. I think today it's up to $9 a gallon, I'm not sure. But it has increased significantly. So we were fortunate to get in on that, at that price we did. Unfortunately, when we have to get it again, I'm sure it won't be that cheap, so. We've scheduled the retirement reception for Curtis Ryder and the Highway Shop from March 25th. And that'll be at, at noon at the shop. And of course, we would certainly like to have you guys attend that as well if you can and, and see Curtis off. And then the NACO conference reservations have been made for everybody. And so we went ahead and made them in case, then if you can't, if you don't think you're going to make it, let us know and we'll cancel. But we wanted to get in, I think you got in on the, in the motel where the conference is at. And when you're dealing with one that's got thousands of attendees, obviously, that's a, that's a milestone, so we don't have to go for multiple places, so. So just let, let me know or let Janelle know if you won't be attending that, we can cancel that reservation.
And we need to let you know too on the SLYNA conference?
Yes, that was the other thing on the.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Association. It's coming up, the end of April. So I don't know why, soon we'll all three be attending that as well.
I plan to attend now, and I live a little closer than the other two, but I think I'll just go ahead and come back each night.
That's, that's two nights, correct? Two days?
Uh, yeah, I think so. It may be two and a half.
Two nights, so.
Three days, two nights.
Yeah.
For two and a half days.
So, yeah, I obviously won't stay there, I'll drive back at five, so. Yeah, so we'll go ahead and get the reservations made for the conference then and, and get that, get that scheduled. Monday's move, as you heard during the work session, we got Monday and Tuesday and into yesterday, got the district court and the county attorney moved into the top floor of the courthouse. All in all, I think, I won't rehash everything, but I think all in all, it went very well. Things are getting a little bit back to normal today and so tomorrow. They're having the opportunity to go through a lot of things. And I know they're holding court this morning up there for the first time back in the new facility. And so we learned a lot about things we wouldn't do again. And when we do move in with everybody from the civic center here in a few weeks, we'll get more prepared. So with that, we have delayed the move for the remaining offices in the courthouse until the week of April 4th. So we're planning on doing that April 4th and 5th. And due to the fact we're not quite as far along on the other two floors as what we'd hoped to be, and we really need to, with moving the top floor, we had space on the main floor and the bottom floor, we can continue to work. And there, obviously, that won't be the case when we move everybody else in. So we really need a little bit more time to, to get things worked out and, and get everything finished up. And that way we'll have everybody out, it'll be cleaned and, and it'll be ready to move in. So we'll put that, have Kathy put that information out to everybody as well to keep them updated. You've gotten your packet, a couple things. First, John had provided the updated COVID report that he got from KDHE, that's pretty comprehensive. And it shows January forward cases diagnosed in the county of COVID, which is, as you can see on that front sheet, it's significantly, 89 cases in January to, at the end of February being six, or 14. So I hate to really be hashing back, but it does show that things are, are getting back to normal and I won't go into all the details, but you can see the, the numbers and numbers by age group. And the thing is, I noted back there, the age group from zero to nine, it's 17 cases and 85 plus had 10 or 19. Between was 12, 15. I mean, to say that younger kids aren't getting it is not necessarily accurate. May not affect them the same, obviously, but they were, they were subject to it. And, but anyway, I'll, I'll leave that for your review. You've also got your year-to-date budget report from Janelle, that shows each account. And then our tax sales tax report, which again, has gone up significantly from, this would be December submission, $158,000. So I guess about one of the highest ones we've ever had in it. Yeah. Amazing. Now, obviously, coming the month of December, so people were getting out, spending for Christmas and things, but boy, we love to see that. That just goes to show again what economic development could do in a couple new businesses and, or if we can keep that trend going, why, that helps out significantly. And it helps all the communities in the county because they all get a piece of that sales tax, state portion, so.
Helps our roads and bridge.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so we had the construction meeting on Monday, I'll kind of touch on that a little bit. And then Craig attended, so he might have some more or something that I missed. But all in all, we talked, you know, we've got a number of little things that need to be corrected or, or touched up, from push bars to the stair tower doors that we're waiting on parts, to lavatories not working because we didn't have a power connector for them. We do have a water leak in District Court's new office that we found is a hole in the roof that the plumbers had, had put in and failed to get, failed to get it sealed when the roofers were there. And of course, we haven't had any moisture, so we didn't know that there was a leak in the roof until the snow started melting. But we're also working with the electricians on some issues with the UPS system, the, the battery backup, trying to figure out why it blew some fuses. Their expert was in yesterday and looking at it in even more detail. And it's looking more and more like it's a defective circuit board in the UPS system itself, as opposed to being hooked up wrong or some other exterior problem. But we're a little skeptical to turn that back on until we can identify where the problem is, so. We had a couple rooms that were blowing hot air, too hot, they weren't balanced out yet. And that goes back to the fact we aren't quite done yet. The HVAC people put everything in, and then another crew has to come in and they balance those dampers out so that the air is blowing appropriately in each room. And that's all part of the process. And that's been done this week, so those are, those problems. So those are, those problems are getting taken care of as well. Part of it is, you know, it's kind of like that comment, I think, somebody said when we were dealing with COVID is, you know, it's kind of like trying to ride on an airplane while you're building it, you know? And this is kind of the same thing. We're trying to, we're trying to move in and use a lot of this stuff while we're still building the facility. So a lot of the things that were issues have not been completed yet, but we're getting more and more things completed every day. Yesterday, I know Tom was able to get the framework up for the jail door display and stuff. I think that's going to look really cool. And in the next couple of weeks, that'll be done by the time we move in. So just everything's kind of taking place. We had an issue back in the dorm rooms in the jail that we've since found was, water was running out of the shower whenever the inmates were showering. There's supposed to be a little berm goes across there that was built into the concrete, so it couldn't peel it up and give it as a weapon. And that was not installed. So the vendor has to come back in and put it in the way it was designed for it. And the specs called for it. For some reason, they didn't put it in. So the vendor will have to come in and do the specs and redo that. So, but then the other thing that Chancey mentioned in the, in the work session is we got Cindy and her crew all out of Sturl Hall. And Martin and his guys went in yesterday and took all the walls down, took the temporary wall down, they cleaned up the floor and actually moved the old furnitures, no longer being used by district court out. And I've got Iser going in this weekend to get it all cleaned. And by Monday, it'll be back in the hands of the fair board and ready to be scheduled for normal use. So that was our goal to get that back because obviously that becomes an economic issue for the whole community. So, but we're able to get that back and things are going there. The other thing I want to touch on is we talked about the furniture that was being brought back and it wasn't being used. This has been a, you know, this whole process has been a sharing thing. But one of the examples of where we're using furniture from one department to the other is Cindy's office had a, district court did have a set of desks that kind of go together. So four people sit around with the partitions, kind of like an X. It wouldn't fit in the new office, but it did fit in the county attorney's office. So rather than buying new furniture, we brought that up. And that was part of that, that thing that Chancey described as a record set. Because it was taken apart into about 500 pieces. And so Seth and Chancey were putting that together the other day. And I had actually called Wednesday that central office in Clay Center and asked Steve McMahon, I said, you have somebody that does that could come down and help these guys? Because I didn't think they were ever going to put it together. And by 5 o'clock, by God, they had it put together. And so I called him back and said, disregard, they figured it out. So, but fact is, that's a, I don't know, that'd be a $20,000 piece of furniture to buy that. And we reused that in another office. So as we said from day one, if we have furniture that we can use, that is usable and not broken or worn out, we're reusing it. We're not just buying new stuff to be buying it. And so when we cleaned out Sturl Hall and we cleaned out the storage container that we had, we put that all down in our new PPE storage building. And that's going to become the Dickinson County secondhand store for moving back in. And we've already taken four desks out of there that went down to the basement yesterday for GIS and IT because their desks are shot. They were in old metal, you know, Air Force, you know, World War I era desks. And so we had some new ones that came, a couple, I think were from the sheriff's department, a couple of them were from court, one of the judges' desks and stuff, and all kinds of masks. And we're using those down there. And perfectly good, there's no reason to not use them. So we're doing what we can to save a few dollars here and there, and hopefully it adds up. But I just wanted to bring up the fact that we're doing everything we can not to purchase everything new. So I think that's about all I've got for today. So.
All right, thank you. Doug is joining us online, I believe, and if you had something you wanted to report.
Well, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Last week, on Friday, the 4th, we had the judicial selection process for the Eighth Judicial District to fill the position for magistrate in Dickinson County. And we had eight really good applicants, which is amazing because when we did it earlier in December, not one applicant applied for it. And now we had eight really good ones. And so we went through the interview process. Neil Googler from Chapman, who is employed as a special investigator for Kansas Bureau of Investigation, was the one chosen. And Neil has a master of criminal justice from Washburn University, finished summa cum laude. And so we're looking forward to him transitioning into that position, and he'll do an excellent job. We also had the tax sale this past Tuesday, and it went well. We had 20 parcels of real estate for sale, 19 of the 20 sold. And Jerry Davis was, and his staff did an excellent job, Leah and her staff did an excellent job. Amy Ball from my office did an excellent job in all the preparation for it. And we have motioned this matter up before Judge Roser for April the 13th for confirmation of the sale. And after with the confirmation of the sale, then the deeds will be prepared and sent out. And that matter will be concluded. And so that's the process that we're going through there. Are there any questions concerning either of the subjects I brought up? Hearing none, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, we had Craig there for the, for the sale, and it was nice to have him there. All of the people that worked on that did just an excellent job. Jerry, the Sheriff Davis did a good job handling the auctioneer work, and the bidders were good. And Craig, I think you would agree, we had pretty much a full house in that area right there.
Yeah, I'd say it was packed. I wouldn't say full.
Did Craig wave his hand at anybody or?
No, he kept his hands in his pockets. He didn't want Jerry to give him a, give him a piece of property there. The plan is that we're going to try very hard to have a second tax sale late this year. And that's, see if we can get ourselves caught up because of the COVID that put us behind. And all the staff did just a great job in the preparation of it. And we'll keep it moving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll go on notices and communications. We did have a few things that had come up. Had one where someone, they've grown up in Abblane, and they said they were disturbed about the seizure that the sheriff's department had on the armored van on interstate. And of course, there's procedures to follow. And that's, that's probably a little bit more complicated than what the news clip had to say. But anyway, that is under review. And we also had, this was to lend support from Tri-County Area Chamber. The CVB is considering assisting to bring small trains into Harrington. And there's an opportunity that businesses or individuals could perhaps sponsor those and in various ways. And that this also is something similar to what has been done in Marion and Omeggo, and also Lynn's Ford. And so we had that notice, had another from a survivor of sexual abuse years ago, I guess, from a gymnastics coach, and wanted to encourage us to support either by petition or email to Kansas Senator Kelly Warren. And that there is a bill, Senate Bill 420. So if anyone wanted to lend support or write letters of support or get more information, Senator Kelly Warren, it's kelly.warren@senatkansas.gov. And we also had some mailings that we've received. We had the Government Journal, and I believe that's all we had. Did anybody else have anything else that want to bring up? I don't have anything, Glenn. So we'll go ahead and move on. We did not have any resolutions. The only item that we have that would come up next is, are some bids for structural steel. And this is for a bridge. So Brad, if you'd, please.
Yeah, the road and bridge team solicited bids for the structural steel for the bridge replacement on the structure at 1885 Daisy Road. And they sent the request out to all of our vendors. Your tally sheet shows what was received. The low bidder was Odin Enterprises of Nebraska, 28,777. And for the push shading and deck shading, the only bidder was Wellborn of Slina, 2,026. And so our recommendation would be to accept the bid from Wellborn and Odin Enterprises for those amounts.
Really accept the bids presented by Brad.
I'll second that. Okay, we have the motion and the second to accept the bids from Wellborn Sales, $20,226.24. Odin Enterprises Materials, $28,777.18. These are the steel bridge materials for 1885 Daisy Road Bridge Replacement. Any other question or comment?
Yeah, I know the fuel is time sensitive for accepting the bid, Brad, the Bernie. You know, I mean, what's the, how good's the bid on this?
On the steel stuff, they were telling us, I think, 24, 48 hours.
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
So far, we haven't had too big of a problem with it, so.
Okay.
Hold it for 30 days like they had.
Right, yeah.
That's a good point. So, and you know, if it ever gets, we have to have a special meeting to prove something that's time sensitive.
Yeah, it does take a little time to get the bid there and get them, you know, get it and get their, the package. And by the time they call our vendors and get it back to us, where things are going, it's going to be even shorter time period.
Yeah, and hopefully we can get it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose, motion carries. I don't believe we have any other business. Is there a motion to?
I'll second that.
Have the motion and second to adjourn any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose, motion carries. We do have a couple of documents to sign before we adjourn, that were adjourned, or after we adjourn.